Call to order the January ninth meeting of the Cold Spring Village Planning Board. Chair's remarks, we have much of anything, we you know, we're processing the Butterfield tree easement.
Mm-hmm.
Just the relocation, John added the language that you guys had asked for the to which was very good to put in just with the tree board had said, so that was amended. So we're in the process now of doing the paperwork, right?
Yeah, I drafted, they they sent me a draft and I just easier for me just to redo it.
Okay.
So I sent it over to you because I want to make sure you look at it to make sure I captured.
Okay.
What you guys discussed.
Alright, so we'll do that, let's do that in the board business at the end then. And then we've got minutes, you guys have the December twelfth minutes in your packet. Uh, let's see. If the applicant is going to move, just we'll go through that easement as well.
Alright, I'm gonna have to go back.
So the twelve twelve.
Yep.
Workshop meeting. I think at the end, the applicant is not going to include the parking in the table because I think she had said to save the money on the on the waivers. There, I know this was, that was part of the discussion, but I think it finally ended up.
That's what she said, I think at the end she expressed that.
Let me refresh my brain, oh god, that was a month ago.
No, I had offered to her, you know, I said, you if you want.
Right.
To not have to come back for the parking.
Right.
The the applicant that we have in front of us tonight showed outdoor dining seats.
Yes.
And I said, we don't really have that in the code, I said, so I said, Chris, if you just take it off. I said.
Oh, okay.
But I said, but if you want to go to the village board, she goes, well, people right next door have it, I said, valid point to go to the village board.
Do they, do they need a special use permit or something from the village board sometimes?
We don't, we have, in the code, there's an, in the code, there's an outdoor dining code that was, that was a test for two thousand and five or something like that, this is a long time ago. And it was, they don't have any issue there because it's it's it can't, about residential, it can't, you know, whatever. It's tough though, because you know, the it's the projection on the sidewalk, because it's, you know, it's kind of, so anyway, so I'd said, I, the planning board doesn't really have anywhere in the code to be approving these tables and chairs outside.
Right.
So I said, just take them off, and the one thing I offered was I said, well, if you want to buy the parking waivers down and find out if you can use them later, then you don't have to come back. I'm going to add those seats, and I think at the end she had said.
Yeah, she was not gonna show them, but.
But that's correct, I mean, we still don't have any resolution on outdoor dining, right?
I don't think you do, actually, because I remember providing some samples to Randy and some of the other board members, and maybe trustee early.
Yep.
So, and I don't remember seeing it in my review of the draft.
Oh, for code update?
Yeah.
Oh, even code update?
Yeah.
Oh, shoot, okay.
I could be wrong, though, I've been given a lot of stuff, so.
Yeah, that's.
Marie is busy.
She can keep you busy. I get my homework, too.
So she, she, the applicant is not including them in the parking table?
Yeah, so we just cross out the last.
Yeah, okay.
Just cross it. Initial public hearing, they seconded it. And then it's just the, the, it's just a singular replacement tree to be mature form, which we captured. The other one, the London Plain tree, was just whatever they put there. The, but the tree board had asked just that they, that they replace that tree, too. Resolution, forward to nothing, public comment, no, all business, twenty-one parsonage coming back, which they should be here tonight. It is noted that they have to appear for the planning board at one nine, letter sent to the board. Or consensus, is that?
It all looks good to me.
This looks like, yeah.
Yep.
Consistent, yeah.
Okay, just with the single, with the single change, motion to approve the twelve twelve minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Very good, on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, those are adopted, the twelve twelve nineteen.
Are we caught up?
What's that?
Are we caught up?
Yeah, oh yeah, no, we got caught up actually a while ago. You can take, until they come back in, we can take a look at. In your packet, you've got the. The modified tree easement.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, we're looking at the whereas statements and all that, just that it captures what, what our understanding is, obviously, you don't need to look at the mortgage clause and all that. If you want to just take a look at that, and then once the applicant comes again, we'll jump to public hearing. Looks fine to me, anybody?
Yeah, it doesn't s, it doesn't discuss the other tree.
So that it's, it discusses it, it refers to the resolution?
Right, and in fact, they, on the latest draft, they, I'm going to attach the resolution in an exhibit, so that way that's recorded.
Perfect.
So that way they don't have to go looking for the resolution years from now.
Okay.
Got it, so go ahead and take a look, you have the resolution as well?
It's right behind you.
Um, we're, I just have one, um, one thought about section three of the now there form. Where we refer to a five inch diameter bur oak, I think that the, the technical term is diameter, it's DBH, diameter at breast height, I don't know if that makes a difference. That, that's meaningful if you're selecting a tree.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the standard is a certain height where you're supposed to measure it from, but we can clarify.
That's the, what's that, that's what that DBH means, though.
Matt, just so I can reference it, what's the resolution number, or is there one yet?
Uh, I don't think it's been assigned yet, and this was still in two thousand and nineteen, so it's definitely not one.
Just so I can write the board, discuss the resolution about.
It's not even, it's not even like a resolution, you're just discussing an easement.
No, no, he's talking about this resolution.
Oh, that resolution, okay.
The actual tree, yeah. Um, I don't know, it hasn't been recorded yet, it's been recorded, I'm sorry, I don't know the number, and I didn't write it on the one that he, that he put in the mailbox.
Well.
Did you get one with the number on it, when he sent it to you?
The number isn't so important, I just.
I have my phone on me.
If you don't care about it, that showing up in the minutes that you've discussed this, then I won't worry about it.
Yeah, no, just the, so how about this, just the, the resolution of the planning board. It's an amended site plan approval for Butterfield for the relocation of the tree. And then, if you look at the resolution, you can see the language that was added in there, I sent John the actual text that came over from the tree advisory board. And so it's the last whereas statement on the first page, and then the first one on the second page.
Specifically for a bird.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, everybody good, very good, alright. Hello?
Sorry, we're keeping you waiting. Are you ready for us?
Uh, yeah, one second, yep.
James, will you start, could you guys sit at the table, that way I don't have to play tennis with the camera.
Understood, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, we've approved the minutes, report of members, anybody have anything?
Nothing to report.
Very good, this is good news, correspondence, none, it's been pretty quiet. All business, so the first all business we have tonight is a public hearing for one fourteen Maine. Uh, the legal notice was in the newspaper, the last two issues. Uh, the notice reads, please take notice of the planning board for the Village of Cold Spring will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty, at seven P M. Or soon thereafter, as a matter may be heard, at the Village Hall, eight five Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, one oh five one six, to consider the application by Denton Cricket LLC as property owner for site plan approval. The applicant has presented to convert existing office space to mixed use retail and cafe. The subject property is located at one fourteen Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, and designated as tax map forty-eight dot eight, block two, lot sixteen. Property is located within the B one, the general business zone, as well as the national and local historic districts. Um, the application and the all documents have been available with the village clerk. Um, and then do you guys have the, the certified return receipt cards?
I forgot them.
Okay.
And I got them all back.
You got all five.
And I was so happy, yeah.
Oh, they did come back, okay.
They did come back, all of them, I couldn't come back tomorrow and drop them.
What's that?
I could come back tomorrow and drop them.
Do we just have to hold the hearing open, then?
Um, yeah.
Because if we don't have evidence of notice, I mean, we have the signs, which are great, and that went out, that went out very quickly.
Yeah, I mean, some, what if, is there any specific instructions in your code about if you don't have the receipts?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't think so, some codes say, if you don't have the receipts, don't bother even starting the public hearing. So I think you guys have some discretion here, where you can start the public hearing, but you should probably hold it open.
I think we probably, yeah, we probably should hold it open, I, I, um, we could, we could review them possibly, or maybe I could review them tomorrow. But I think we should at least hold open, we're gonna have to hold open the public comment, because obviously, we don't know if the public's been notified.
Oh, right.
So we can hold the hearing, and we can hear the application, and we can, you know, we can discuss, and we can even go so far as to take final action, not, no, not, no, we can't.
Yeah, you could do like a straw, a straw vote.
Yeah.
You know, or let them know your intentions, or direct me to.
But we'd have to vote at the next.
Yeah, and you'd have to wait to confirm.
Because we can't take final action without knowing the public, yeah.
Yeah, you have to wait to confirm that the notices were sent, and that's all good, and then you can close it.
Okay, okay.
And then some of the municipalities, like I said, wouldn't even open the public hearing, but I think you guys have some discretion, because your code doesn't say that.
Yeah, and I think it's, um, it's been in the newspaper, it's been, the people that are the adjacent properties, we have the poster in the, so I think that the likelihood is that the people that intend to be here actually are here. And have constructed notice, um, so I think, what, how does the board feel, and I feel we should just proceed and then hold the public hearing open, hold the hearing open and comment portion open. Confirm that the, that the, that they were received in a timely manner.
Make it contingent.
And then have to come back at the next one, and then actually take the action on the application.
So should I bring, drop it to tomorrow, or not?
To Jeff, right?
Yeah, you can write, drop it to Jeff, and I'll pick him up, I'll be in the village tomorrow, so I could just swing by.
Okay.
But I guess we can't really do anything anyway until the following, until the following meeting, anyway.
Oh, okay, we won't be able to vote until.
Oh, okay, because I, I know what that, I just want to christenize myself.
Don't do that.
Don't do that, it's a new year's.
It's not extreme. How late are you here this evening, I know that's probably a ridiculous question, but how late are you here?
Uh, probably not very late, we have another applicant that I think's coming.
Because we could go back and.
I could go back over to Brewster.
Oh.
Forty minutes each way.
Don't do that, no.
I'm fine if people are gonna be here, if not.
It's hard to say, I mean, I doubt it, I'm, I don't think so, yeah, I don't think so, I think we probably, this, you know.
I don't blame you, I.
Because we don't have public com, typically, the public comment is what takes, you know, takes a bit of time, um, doesn't, I'm not sure we have anybody commenting, were you here for this one, or?
Mm-hmm.
For, for one fourteen? Yeah, okay, good, so, I mean, that's, you know, if, she's not commenting, so it should be pretty quick, alright, so let's, let's proceed. Okay, so, well, the hearing is open, um, we're gonna go ahead and proceed with that, um, if you want to come up and present the application to the, to the public and the board has seen it.
So, I've got updated drawings to.
Okay, great.
Put at the parking table, it's kind of taking the older interpretation of grandfather spaces, so you may just say things, and accept that, but, you know, you can, that's open to conversation.
How, how do you mean?
So, what space is grandfathered in?
So, I'm looking at the existing, existing current use of office and at hundred fifty square feet per, or, you know, divide by hundred fifty square feet per, you know, to figure out the number of spaces required, and that is nine. And so, that's what spaces are required, um, and so, we're saying that there's grandfathered in nine spaces for the current use.
But this is a new use.
Right, so.
So it gets reset.
Yeah, change of use, the only way to, the only way to accommodate the parking requirement for a change of use is to, is parking, is payment load parking waivers.
Okay.
Um, the only way that parking would travel with the land is if there was, if there was a variance.
Got it.
That was, that was attached to the property, right, I mean, you know, so, and I think there might be a property on Main that was done that way.
Yeah.
Um, but if it's just a use, and that that use changes, then everything starts over, the parking waivers specifically are only available for one-time use.
Right, yeah.
But I, I mean, this board, the way we've interpreted that, is, you know, if it's the same use and you're adding more seating, then there's just add more parking, you don't have to replace the ones you already have. But I think in this case, I would not, I wouldn't agree that there's anything, what is grandfathered is any business on Main Street has one space that's grandfathered. That's what the planning board's been doing prior, so if you, if your calculation comes out to nine, you get, you get, you know, you get a credit of one for the grandfathered, and then have to buy waivers for eight. Anybody feel any differently?
Okay, not that I can try.
Okay, good, no, no.
So there's nine required on the proposed use?
No, the proposed, there's eleven required, twelve total.
Oh, sorry, twelve, yes, twelve less the grandfathered, that's eleven.
So basically, where it says nine under grandfathered, it should just say one, and then new required, you pay eleven.
So they would be waivers for eleven.
Grandfathered nine.
It worked that way for the PCNR.
What's that?
It worked that way for the PCNR, though.
I wasn't here for that.
The formerly known as PCNR, actually.
When they, what did they change their use, or what was?
Well, we went all the way back and I got a seating arrangement from when it was the, the old homestead club, and I counted those seats.
Wow.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Horse and buggy back then.
Yeah, well, work for that application.
Things change. Okay, so there's, I, I mean, I think you can just walk us through it pretty quick.
Okay, great.
And I think you're pretty.
So, simple, Dr. Lynn is, is proposing to change the use from the current office space to a mix of retail and, and cafe. And so, the total floor area of the, of the space is one thousand three hundred and two, and the, the cafe plus the work, well, the, the work portion of the cafe is a hundred and sixty square feet, and the cafe seating is two hundred and thirty-five square feet. That leaves us with a balance of nine hundred and seven square feet for the retail. So, um, the, the cafe seating, it's, it's one car per three seats, we are showing eighteen seats, so that would give us a requirement of six, uh, seats. And so the retail space at nine oh seven would render a requirement of six parking spaces as well.
With respect to parking waivers, we have that, right, right, I mean, the minute, the minute parking waivers were brought in, which is two thousand and nine, that's the new code. Right, that that's how you're supposed to be dealing with change of use. It may be, now, prior to the parking waivers, then they probably were doing what you were saying, um, I don't know that PCNR was before the.
Yeah.
That was before the parking waivers, yeah, yeah, so then when the park, when the, when the legislative body, the village board, I think it was under Seth Gallagher's administration, introduced these, and they were, they were adopted, then that's the new, that's kind of the new law of the, of village set. When you deal with change of use, the parking waivers, the parking waivers are very clear to say that they are one-time use, you know, per application. Again, the only difference I would see is if, you know, if you're, this use, for example, you, you come in later and say you want to add seating to the back, I, I don't think that, that, you know, that the first eleven go away, I think that's a little silly. But I think if it's a new applicant and it's a new use, then it's, it's very clear in the code that the, that the parking waivers have to be purchased again.
Yeah, that's how we've treated probably at least a half a dozen similar applications in the last couple of few years I've been here.
Yeah, yeah, and so PCNR would have predated the adoption of the parking, of the payment load parking, okay, just sort of clear.
Okay.
Because we want to make sure, obviously, that we're, you know, that we're doing the right thing here as well, very good, um, okay. I, I mean, it's, it's very straightforward, the plans look good, we'll just, we can just hand annotate the, the grandfathered, the new required, to one and eleven. Okay, do we have any comment from the public on the application, no, okay, um, alright, let's, does the board have any discussion? And then we went through this pretty early last time.
Yeah. I have nothing to contribute.
Um, we can, I don't know, can we take action on seeker without notification, without public, name of the patient?
Yes, you know, in a public hearing, it is a type two action anyway, because it's just a, a change of use, and with the new seeker regulation, remember before, we used to have to do it.
Yeah, because of districts, yeah.
But now the seeker regulations have relaxed pro, development within historic district.
Right.
So, uh, since the new regulations, two years ago, these have all been, these change of uses have all been type two actions, so.
So it's exempt from seeker.
Yeah, that's my recommendation, if you guys want, you can kind of vote on that.
Right. Does anybody want any, any discussion on seeker and the fact that it's a type two action, like, like John was saying, that what made them all type one was anything in or even adjacent to a historic district, and it's hard, you know, to swing a dead cat and not end up in a historic district. So it was, all these applications were, but that's what you're supposed to do, you know, you gotta fill out the long form, and you gotta just go through the form, and, you know, and sign up and put it in pipe, which is what you're supposed to, the state likes to see that, uh, we don't need to do that anymore. Is everyone in agreement that it's a type two action, okay, great, a motion to, um, to classify as a type two?
So who?
Seconded? Second, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, so that's closed, um, so I guess if there's no board discussion, I guess we'll, we'll have to leave the public hearing open as well as the public comment section, go ahead.
Could I suggest that perhaps you vote with the condition that evidence of public notice?
I don't think we can take action without notice, and we probably shouldn't really even hold the hearing.
Okay.
Um, but I feel, and we discussed this up in advance, is that I, I think there's enough constructive notice with the poster, two weeks in the paper, um, you know, the postcards, even though they come back, doesn't really even, you know, it's kind of is what it is. Especially because a lot of them are just going to absent landlords, right?
Right.
Um, but they've been notified, and that's the right thing to do, because obviously, a change is happening in a property they own, um, and it's up to, it's incumbent upon them to come here and make sure that they're here. We need to just see that that happened, um, and we, obviously, a big part of the, of the public input process is notice. So without notice, we really can't take act, without evidence of notice, we can't really take action, uh, we can take action on seeker, which we just did, you know, so it's a type two, which means you don't have to, there's no, no, no work to do there, not even a form. But yeah, no, we can't, we can't rule on the application in any way, um, we can, we can certainly kind of tell you which way we're leaning, you know, if that's of help, I mean, you know, I mean, if you want to take an informal vote. Just so people, and not really a vote.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, if you have any questions or concerns or potential conditions or, or something like that.
Uh, yeah, I think you might as well, um, might as well, just update the parking table.
Yeah, okay.
Update that, so it's, so we have a clean copy for the file. Obviously, you'll come back with a brief.
That's gonna be your, the site plan, so to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it's just good that they get the parking table right on, just so we've got a one pager to just kind of put in the file, and everybody's clear what, what was approved.
In the location, it's not within five hundred feet of Route nine D or State Highway.
No, it's right, it's right over here, yeah, so it's gotta be good.
There's no referral to Public County, okay.
No.
Um, it's, and that, that's about State Highway, right, not County?
County, too.
State and County, yeah, nine D.
State, county roads, highways.
Well, the Fair Street is a county road.
Fair Street's a county road?
I don't think so.
If you go down there, there's a little blue sign. It's like County Route seventy-two or something, so, I don't know, is this five hundred feet from it?
That's still, well, oh, I mean, from this end of Fair Street, this end of Fair Street is considered.
Which one's Fair Street, is that the one I'm taking?
This one goes down Loretto.
By the, by the church, by the big brick church.
And then the top?
The big yellow house, no, this one down here.
Next to the fortress.
Abandoned.
At the corner of the Blue Shum.
Yeah, or no.
Oh, like, right across the street, actually, I wonder.
Right, it basically drives right into Village Hall.
Yeah.
That's Fair Street.
That's fair.
Um, it is, I, I think you're right, there is a little county sign, and once you get into the village, it definitely changes over.
All bets are off, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't know that, okay.
That's what I would think.
Because there's a little sign, and the village posts the speed limit as soon as you get by the park.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
There were definitely more than five hundred from that, and.
Yes, okay.
Alright, do we want to do just a, just a quick poll of people's?
Sure.
And then I guess that the next one will, you'll have the evidence, well, if anybody shows up, we'll obviously take public comment from those folks.
Yes.
Um, and then we'll, and then we'll do the, the formal vote at that point, and then that way, then we, at that point, then we can issue the, um, the letter to the, to the village board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, assuming that the, the majority votes to, to put the application forward, to do the parking waivers.
So, so maybe I shouldn't bring this things tomorrow, because then I can keep them together, it's, because if I drop them tomorrow, will they be sold?
No, it's the village clerk, it'll go with the village clerk, yeah, no, he'll, he'll have them, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, that's fine, yeah, or it doesn't, but it doesn't have to be tomorrow, you don't have to rush out, if you're not making a trip over here, there's no huge rush, because we'll have to do it at the next meeting, which is two weeks out.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Um.
I'm, I'm sure you'll remember them. I'm, I'm sure you'll remember him back.
That's, okay, my big question is, because I, I still have freelance, um, assignments. If I give those to James and I cannot be there that day for the, the, in the two weeks next hearings, is it a problem?
No.
Okay, so, okay.
No.
Okay.
And I would imagine that if anybody had any concerns or stuff, they might, you know, they would have reached out to you. That's always the best thing, is for people to start talking earlier.
Yeah.
As opposed to finding out they have an issue later, because they felt they didn't understand something. So, um, all right, so we'll have to hold the, both the hearing as well as the public comment section open. Do people want to at least give their opinion? I mean, I'm in favor of the application.
Yeah, same.
So, I mean, it should be, yeah.
Great.
Um, and then what happens next is then, obviously, we'll have to, we'll, we'll take the evidence of, of neighbor notification. We'll throw that in the file, uh, then if anybody shows up, obviously, we'll take that public comment, we'll put that into the record. Um, I wouldn't expect, you know, uh, the whole, I mean, I think there's been enough constructive notice, they probably would have been here. Uh, I'd be surprised if there was, you know, negative comments about, you know, a food establishment on, on Main Street, I mean. So I, I doubt that there'll be any challenge there. So, um, Seeker's already closed out, um, and that's about all we can do tonight, right?
And they don't need any HDRB or?
Yeah, so what, I had just said, I had just advised them to look at the code. There, you can put a very small sign applied to the glass. That is a, it's a, it's a very small, you must know it, it's a very small, you know, with respect to square footage. Um, otherwise you get into HDRB approval. But any signage or anything that you do that's visible from the public right of way. You know, I don't imagine you're altering the outside of the building anyway, because it's a, it's a leased property. Um, but sign, make sure you pay close attention to the signage.
Right.
Obviously, don't be unallowed.
Yeah, now you read the whole.
Yeah, 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 exactly, and so, and you see there's a section in there that you can actually, which we have advised some applicants of. You know, if you want to get in quickly, just, you know, apply just like the final letters to the window and then, and then go for a signage. It's not, it's not that complicated, but it takes a little bit of time. So, you know, because I'm sure you probably, I mean, obviously, it's, it's the branding, so you may want to do that at some point, but if you want to get in quickly, that's one way to do it.
Right.
Okey-dokey?
All right.
Very good, thank you so much.
Sorry to get involved.
No, 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 sorry, uh, sorry it didn't work out, I wish we could have, uh, got you out, we tried to do it in, at least two to three meetings. Used to be, uh, used to be a different story. Thanks so much.
Congrats, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I did not hear from Twenty-One Parsonage. We had emailed back and forth and I said, you know, we're not meeting, obviously, ready for Christmas, we'll, we'll, we'll be there on the ninth, and so come in on the ninth.
And they never confirmed?
Well, no, he's, no, he did in that email. But I see that the zoning board of appeals hearing was pushed back. So.
Thank you.
Maybe they're not available, thank you so much. So I'm guessing maybe without letting us know, they're pushing back as well. Um, we can go through the letter again, we've got, we've got John here, if anybody has any questions. So. So there, essentially, we're, it's just kind of Groundhog's Day, right? I mean, we're, you know, we're. Yeah, I mean, the application is very, very similar to what we saw. We saw an application that had a, a parking space.
Yep.
Um, I don't know that ever went to two parking spaces. So, we, um, so you guys have a copy of the letter that we drafted and sent to them back on June four. The planning board held a workshop with Twenty-One Parsonage, applicable February twenty-eighth, this comment on the site plan is formally pressured by the ZVA. I think that's again what's happening. It resulted in scheduling this meeting. At the time, the planning board did not wish to provide formal written recommendation on site plan because the advice was the village code had a merger clause, they had for purposes of zoning, merge the applicant slot. That opinion has now changed and the village has conceded that no merger can be claimed. As a legislative action of merger, we can strike all this merger stuff. As a legislative action of merger and setting aside such vacating, same is no longer in play. The full planning board would like to formally restate the direction provided to the board, provided by the board on a potential proposed site plan for the residential redevelopment of Twenty-One Parson Street. Were the ZVA to consider the granting of first, the large area variance, the lot is less than half the required area for an R1 lot. Thereby making the lot a buildable lot, the ZVA should first be guided and abide by its mandate to grant the minimum number of variances possible. Everybody still feel the same way, I mean, that's the way the code reads.
Yep.
Given that the applicant wants to build a small home of the same dimensions as a shed twenty-two by sixteen and as that shed will be demolished, this appears to be easily achievable with only an area variance. Though a very sizable area variance that we are concerned is unprecedented. I think we should, with respect to, not as much that it's unprecedented, but it is, it's inconsistent with, with all prior application of the code. I don't, I, I haven't gotten a clear statistic on that, I've asked for it. But, you know, I know that we, you know, I know that, you know, when I went through the file, I saw one denied for a ten percent area variance. You know, I didn't, they're down in the bottom, so you're basically just kind of flipping through, the stuff's not digitized.
So. I, I also think, it's not just that the side, the, the very, the size of the variance is unprecedented, or is unprecedented, or inconsistent. It's the, the question of developing a property of that size is, you know, so it's, I feel like it, it's, this is different than somebody who is living in an existing home asking for a variance, right? This isn't, this isn't, like, it's not in a, it's not a variance in a vacuum. The context is that this is for, this isn't for residential redevelopment. This is for resi, this is new residential development on a substandard lot that is, and so the, it's not just the size of the variance, but the use is, the proposed use is kind of inconsistent.
Well, the use, the use is allowed, because the use is, the, the parcel has the use. The question is whether or not, you know, that they can, that they can apply the code and allow the use given the number of variances that are required to do that. If, if, if the merger clause language was, was good, it would have, it would have merged the two lots together, because they didn't need, they didn't need a, it, it wouldn't have been a taking, because the two lots would, they didn't need that. So, right, they could still use the two lots.
Right.
But since it didn't do that, also ours doesn't even say anything about not conveying it without a legal, without a legal subdivision. So it would have been, still, this still could have happened, because the language isn't in there to say that you can't convey them separately, right? So, these lots are owned by two separate owners now, right? So, and that's why we kind of are where we are. R1, it's in the R1 district, it's an allowed use in the R1. The question is whether or not the zoning board can get to a position, or whether or not they feel there's too much inconsistency with their past application of the code and whatever, and all the neighbor input and everything else that comes to them, as to whether or not they should put the application forward. You know, so I would say, I would just add that it's likely inconsistent with past practice and unprecedented, right? And that's just up to them, and you, you know, you don't want to make decisions based on setting precedent, but it is very clear that you, you better be clear on how, no different than the park, our parking waivers question tonight, right? You know, are we right in this, you know, is this the way, you know, and, and as, and as James was saying, that didn't go that way for the PCNR, well, that's prior to the code change, right? So we're following the code, they follow the code, we are now following the code, right? So that's what everybody has to look back to, is not only what the code says, but your application of the code. Parking waivers with respect to Two Depot is, is even better example to say that, listen, we don't believe the legislative intent was ever to expand the use of residential with parking waivers. Right, and if you look at all the supporting documentation that introduced the concept of parking waivers by the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, the mayor, it all says, no, these were for, you know, these were for, just what we did tonight, to provide a way on, in the B1 to process change of use applications. And there is, like I said, there is real intent and logic behind that money. It isn't just buying something that doesn't exist. It goes towards, you know, dealing with parking issues, about parking meters, you know, they, you know, they, they were able to fund those parking meters. You know, they look at partner issues and it provides that money. It's not really just buying nothing, although it can feel that way, um, it isn't. So, again, it's really just kind of, you know, are we, are we applying the code? And that's really what they're going to be tasked with, right, which is, is it consistent, right? Because if we are inconsistent, that James is about to claim, right? You know, if, if we have a reason that that's two thousand and eight, these were dropped in two thousand and ten, the law changed, right? This is the current law. So, I think that's, I think the inconsistency is very important when boards look to make, you know, make, when they're going to make their decisions, right? Okay, um, so we want to do that change, just likely inconsistent?
Inconsistent, past application.
Past application and unprecedented.
And unprecedented, okay, great. As it is likely that the applicant, as well as the village, would prefer a far lesser front yard than the twenty-five feet in the code, a variance could slash should be provided to be in keeping with the neighboring house front yard setbacks. Thereby maintaining village character without comprising a neighboring parcel setback where transfer of fire, stormwater infiltration, privacy, et cetera, would be of greatest concern. The planning board's comments at this two twenty-eight meeting were very straightforward. Make the site plan as conforming as possible, provide the two required onsite parking spaces, permeable, permeable grass pavers. The applicant pushed back to say, well, I don't want to see all that driveway. And, you know, we said permeable gap, grass pavers to achieve the desired undeveloped green space look were discussed as one option. Um, but provide the spaces in compliance with the statutory parking requirement that all applicants are held to. For safety, the driveway curb cut should remain adjacent to the northern boundary and the neighboring driveway to group the vehicular traffic and parking there, providing a buffer between pedestrian traffic from Thirty-Six Pine to their only parking on Parsonage Street. They exit out the back door and then park next door, because they have no onsite parking, because the, you know, for the same reason. In reviewing the video of the five-two meeting, the, uh, we can, that can be struck, that was really just talking about the planning board chairs.
I have a quick, uh, question on the permeable, permeable grass pavers.
Well, this, and this actually, uh, you know, we're just really just kind of going through this, because we're not going to issue this, they gotta come in.
No.
The, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're here for, um, I guess, what was it, like a?
The ZVA sent a referral for an advisory opinion from the planning board.
Right, which was what they did last time.
Yeah.
So now you're just going through it again.
Right.
Kind of updating your referral.
Right.
Okay.
I might just clarify or, or expand what they could possibly do to, say, permeable, permeable grass pavers or partial pavers and planted area, because, like, you can also have those strips, you know?
Yeah, we have that, like a Hollywood driveway.
Is that what it's called?
Uh, that's what I heard, that's why I know the mess.
Yeah, so just to make, keep it more open, because it's not like, it's not, we're just saying, there are plenty of options.
You can also do the plastic egg crate.
Right, exactly.
We plant the whole, the whole lawn goes over it, just to keep it from crushing the grass.
Exactly.
So is the, I, uh, the current application has only one parking space?
One parking space to the, to the left.
In back of Girl and Hoover.
Because when you look at the code, and the code says, issue the minimum number of variances, right? So if you really want to develop this lot, now it's residential, it's not residential. It's an accessory use that got split from the, from the, you know, from the primary use parcel. Neither's fault, right, you know, it's just the way it is.
Right.
The question is now how do you make use of it, and can you make use of it, right? Which is, you know, definitely buyer beware, right, you know? And they were aware that it was going to be a challenge, right? So, when you look at that, I, I, I think you have to first start with the mandate of the ZVA, which is to issue the least number of variances. We have in our letter here that we don't, we find it, there is no compelling reason to say that, that this house should sit in the footprint of a shed. This memory building, this architectonic relationship, I think is, it's all language and it's all sounds lovely, but the reality of it is, is life happens, right? You know, so, there was, I, you weren't, you got, you two weren't at the hearing. So the hearing that, that they, that the public hearing for the ZVA was that, the what they're, what the, the zoning, what the, what the HDRB came in in support of, which I, I question frankly why the HDRB supports a land use application if it's not really going to preserve a structure, right? Or a structure is in eminent, you know, if there's an, uh.
It's not preserving historic fabric.
Right, it wore, but if it's, but if it's in imminent danger of being lost, right? Then definitely I, I appreciate that they jump in, but in this case where it's a demolition. So what they say they're preserving is this relationship of these two buildings, one lost and being rebuilt as a memory building. And then this void between the two, but the void between the two is the parking space, right? You know, I will tell you, the renter on my street has a commercial dump truck with a plow that we can't hardly get by, right? You know, so renters can be anything, you can also get somebody that's a taco truck, right? I mean, a parking space is there to be used. So the reality of it is, is to say that this is all going to be staged and this void will be there and you'll, you'll see this relationship between an old shed and a house, and that's all lovely language, but it's just language, right? Because the reality of it is, is life will happen. And the minute the lot is granted a large area variance and then is buildable, well then, then life happens. And not only that, owners can change, use can change, needs can change, right? So I mean, the planning board looks at this, and the reason we call the planning board is because we're supposed to be planning, right? You know, not just kind of winging it and saying, well, you know.
Right.
And there's a lot of, you know, there was a lot of the, a lot of the talk in the public hearing was that small lots are very common and therefore this is good and it's consistent and in keeping. That's all well and good, but that's not in the code, right? You know, and there was a lot of talk about, oh, the forefathers didn't really want this code, it was just lifted suburban code. I'm not sure that's true either. I think in nineteen sixty-seven, when the code was adopted, suburban and modern was probably thought to be better than these old Victorian structures, right? I don't know that it's so clear to say that the people appreciated these Victorian structures back in nineteen sixty-seven and didn't want to see ranches. If you look at what was built here in the, in the fifties and sixties, it is in fact ranches with big setbacks, right? You know, they wanted them, right? It's not for us to determine anyway, that's not our, that's not our job, you know, to kind of pontificate about what, you know, we just have to look at what's there. And like, with respect to the ZVA and the ZVA's mandate, it's to, it's to issue the minimum number of variances. So I think as a planning board, if we're asked for advisory opinion, then our advisory opinion is make it as conforming as possible, right? You know, it, it, it handles all the things that the whole point of planning, the whole point, you know, why you have a twenty-five-foot side yard setback, right? For the transfer of fires, transfer of noise, it's transfer of all these things, right? In the event that there is an issue that is, that couldn't have been identified, all the better that it is conforming as possible, right? And there's a negative impact to a neighboring parcel. Who, one of the people at the hearing made a comment, which I thought was really important to me, was you don't have a right to tell somebody how to use their land and, and how you want to enjoy their land. There's the other side of that coin is, but I have the expectation that the, that the local body, you know, the, the planning board and the ZVA will, that I have a, that I should have a reasonable expectation that they're going to apply the code, right? And that the code says, hey, twenty-five foot side yard setbacks. Yeah, so you have some ex, reasonable expectation to say, I know what can happen there. In fact, two of the applicants there said they were under the, you know, the impression that, from George Tompkins, they were told it was unbuiltable. That's, and that stuff is important to the extent that it informs the decision, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the ZVA has to just go back to the code. So I think what we're doing here is basically saying, um, you know, another thing we brought up is just this, this precedent, that, you know, you take this building down, you know, nobody else gets to take a building down and say, now I don't need to apply with the code, right? One twenty-six Main, um, was it one twenty-six Main? Yeah, you know, you take the building down, well then you start over, right? You know, you, you need to provide all the parking onsite, you need to, you know, so the same thing here, if this whole thing is coming down, this, this, this language in the application, this disassembly, a disassembly is a demolition. If they want to take the, the framing of the building and use it inside as an ornamentation, great, that's still demolition, right? So if you're going to talk about consistency, right, and being consistent with the application of your code and your applicants having a predictable outcome, then apply the code, right? And be as careful as you can, including stopping, like tonight, stopping a hearing, saying, hey, are we right about these parking waivers, right? You know, because you want to go back and you're required to correct your mistakes. We're, we're doing it correctly. So in this case, you know, if a building, there is significant precedent that if a building comes down, you start over, right? So if that's what's happening here, well then, why is this footprint of this shed compelling to anyone to say that's why a new, where a new home should be built? You know, with a front yard setback that I don't think is even afoot.
Right.
You know, and when you talk about, uh, you know, and the applicants, and the neighbors of the applicant were very, very clear, saying there's a very big difference between a shed and a house, right? Cooking happens, sleeping happens, fires happen, right? I mean, it's just, it's different, right? So all the better that if anything happens, in my opinion, you have conforming setbacks, right? Um, I think that that's a, you know, that's.
I think, I think also, I think what makes it hard is that we're interpreting the code and the code does have, you know, this has all these flaws, because it's, you know, they have been brought up. So I think that our duty is to interpret the code to sort of our best understanding of what it's written to fulfill or to what its goals are.
The goals, right.
And especially, I, so that's why I'm driven to sort of really focus on things like the.
And especially, I, so that's why I'm driven to sort of really focus on things like the required parking because of things like, you know, that could just definitely just be a real nuisance for, for everyone.
Right.
You know, and that's, so that's kind of where I think we just have to say like, you know, we're interpreting the code. The code is, and, and I do think you try to minimize variances wherever, wherever the code makes sense, you know? And I think that's what we're doing. We're not, we're saying minimize, we're not saying like no variances.
No, without question.
Right, you can't do that.
You'd want as front yard variance.
Right.
You know, in that village, it would be silly to shove the building back 25 feet.
Exactly, so.
I don't think we should go so far as to say, we don't think they really meant that in 67. I don't think it really matters, you know? But the reality of it is, that's, you know, that's been the consistent practice. A consistent application is to try to keep the rhythm of the, of the front yard setback.
Yeah.
Right, you know, across the block. So that's, that's, that is consistent.
Yeah.
While it is inconsistent with the code, it's consistent with the application of the code and, and giving variances for that.
Right.
And I think that would be encouraged. I, I don't know that there's anything that says, let's do a one foot setback, right? I don't know that there's anything on the books that has ever said, let's do that. I don't know if there's anything that's ever said to a side yard setback, you know, of this, right? And then reducing the parking, we've got a serious parking problem in this village. I mean, so to do redevelopment or new development of residential and approve it without the required parking, you know, we just went through a parking table and we, we're counting seats, we're counting, you know, we're counting square footage, we're counting everything and saying, provide the parking. This, you know, again, it's about consistency, right? And the statutory, you know, code that everybody is held to when they go to, you know? And again, I think the one thing that's big, which we have in our letter, that there's significant precedent, 126 Main most recently, when a non-conforming structure is demolished, replacement was brought up to code and maybe grandfathering. In that case, it was the parking, you know, the applicant said, well, I have a grandfathered parking space. Grandfather parking space to the current building, right? If you take the building down, no, I don't think there is anything grandfathered, right? I think you provide all the parking onsite, right? Because the, the whole point of those parking waivers was for existing structures in their existing form, at least on the footprint, to be able to actually continue to operate and have changes of use. But if you want to redevelop an entire parcel and remove everything, the building, the trees, all the way front to back, well then you're starting over, right? There is no grandfather. So I think it's the same thing here is if you're going to take a structure down, right? And reuse the frame and call it a disassembly or whatever, you're still, you're still, it's, it's, it's a new development, right? So basically the question is what, you know, what is the, and the Planning Board, I think we were clear in our letter. Yeah, so I think it's all pretty straightforward. But I guess, I think in, in just the general context of the letter, people feel pretty much the same way. Because I think we're going to wait until they come in. I don't, I mean, I guess I could ask Donald if he wants just.
I think you should wait for the applicant to come in to give them their opportunity to speak. And I would recommend to the applicant, hey, we discussed it internally, have him, you know, review this meeting.
Okay.
And so that way hopefully he can respond to your comments, just so he has the opportunity to add his two cents before you finalize your, your recommendation. It seems pretty consistent with your prior recommendation.
The application is almost, it's identical.
The application is pretty identical.
It's identical to when we wrote this letter. We'll remove the things about, you know, about hearings and, and things that came out of certain meetings. The grass pavers were part of a specific discussion, but we can certainly add some language to say there is, you know, there is, there is,
Multiple options that.
You know, surfaces that could be used that look, that look natural, you know?
And are natural, like incorporate natural.
The reality of this is then, like I said, life happens, right? Like I said, we've, we, I mean, on, on my street in particular, we've got a serious parking problem, yeah? Because there are a lot of SUVs and then one of the renters is a, is contractor and has a huge commercial dump truck. And now it's going to plow it. You know, so look, if you're, if you're the renter now, this one, it's going to go off the street one day, you know? You know, so I mean, it's not so simple as to say it, this architectonic relationship is going to be beautiful and the void's going to be.
It's got a word.
I, I don't, it was that night, it went on and on.
I tried Googling it.
It sure was a word that night.
Look, I get it. I mean, I think it's lovely, right? I mean, that this whole, this, the relationship with these two, that's not what's going to happen.
Just so I get caught up to speed because I was kind of brought in late before the ZBA, right before the ZBA meeting last month. So it sounds like the HDRB, at least a majority of the HDRB members had supported the current location. Is that?
Well, I couldn't quite follow the, the, yes, that was kind of their recommendation because of this architectonic relationship, to see this void between the two. Although they did maintain, they don't have enough details to know that anyway.
Right.
Because they haven't seen enough from the plan, so it was not that.
So in your recommendation, it seems like it's going towards shifting it more towards the middle. I know, I think there was a little box there where they can meet a lot of setbacks.
This is.
Yeah, they can meet almost all the setbacks with the, with the driveway on the right-hand side and put two cars in it, right?
Oh, of course.
And I think that makes, first of all, I think it's the most defensible thing for the village to say, hey, the setbacks are maintained, right? Now what you do on the next application, when somebody says, that's not quite big enough, right? The next donor, I don't know what the ZBA does, but once you open up the, you know, the box, that's it. So if they make it build and will do that, at least on the first, you know, at least on this specific site plan, you can say it's predominantly conforming, right? The only thing that wouldn't conform is the front yard setback, which nobody wants conformance anyway.
Right.
And it would at least give more buffer to the people to the left, right? Who said, I'm going to have a car parked three feet from my kitchen window, right? At least that way they'd have a 25 foot setback to a structure. I think the, the, the HDRBs, what I understood their central premise to be was this architectonic relationship, which is predominantly the void between the house and the barn.
Yeah, the secondary.
And once you put a curb cut in there and a driveway, you know, and life happens and renters happen, we understand it's not going to be occupied by them, so it's going to be renters.
So they want to preserve how it looks now between the house on the corner and the existing barn.
And that was the overriding premise of everything they said. And so that was my point where the, the applicants architect had talked about a, a certain sculptor. I said, things are clean and very nice. I said, yes, they're all, they're very nice, right? And that art is staged and you set an empty Dunkin' Donuts cup next to that structure and he's going to lose his shit, right? So I said, that's what's going to happen, right? Is that the, the house gets lived in, right? The grill goes out, the car goes in the driveway, but you know, there's not, it doesn't look like that. In fact, it will look nothing like that because why in the world is a car parked in the middle of the backyard between the house and the old barn? So to me, it is not only not compelling, I don't even follow it. But again, I would think that the HDRB really should insert themselves in land use when it's, when there is, when there's appeared to be the imminent loss of a historic structure, right? Because of a land use decision. This one that is, that the application has been presented as a demolition, I don't know what the, what the, but yes.
Everybody has their, every board has their own perspective and criteria. So when you guys see an application, you're looking at A, B, and C, but the HDRB is focusing on X, Y, and Z.
Right.
Because you, you all have your different tasks.
Simultaneously with the assertion that the space between the buildings is valuable, it's also being referred to as a missing tooth. And that this is somehow, that there's a loss by not using this property as a residential dwelling space.
But if they use, are they going to, it's going to be gone, that shed is going to be gone. So where is the historical?
Well, there won't be any historical fabric.
Exactly, so there is nothing.
There.
Unless they keep that shed and, and keep it as is and, and build from inside, it's livable. And then you can see the shed, you don't see their house.
Well, I think, well, I think that's the whole point of this design is that.
But it's still, it's, it's not, it's still not the same. It's not the historical building itself anymore.
No.
So what is the point there? The history from the historical board. And also when we wrote this letter, there was, you know, our recommendation was based on our idea of pushing it backwards instead of right at the walk sidewalk. You know, that, that thing, I went to look at it, it really is right on the sidewalk. And then no house, if you develop a new one, no house should be that close to the sidewalk. It, it, it just, it's so obvious, no matter what, you know, unless.
Well, and that's what we, that's what we put in our letter. We find no compelling reason to be following the footprint of this shed, right? You know, there, there is a lot of words being put around this, you know, this, this void and this kind of, as if it's all a still life, right? And it's all going to be painted, right? Well, that's great, but it's not a painting, right? It's, it's, it's a living, breathing property. So the question is really what's the, what's the best use and can it be made to use? And in the letter, well, I think we'd probably leave that in, is that if you can't, if you can't really wrap your brain around, or you find that this, these vehicles are, are an issue, parking is an issue and seeing these things on the side are an issue, well then what you're really saying is that an R1 use of that property isn't compatible, right? That's what you're saying. You can't wrap your brain around the compatibility of creating an R1 parcel on that narrow sliver. It shouldn't be, oh, well then let's not do R1 things that are required by every other R1 applicant. Two cars for a house, right? And a driveway, I mean.
I think it's the precedent that it would set.
Yeah.
The number, I think that's really the, the crux of it, if you wanted to just distill it, is that if you allow, if you allow this application to move forward with such a number of variances, some of which don't, are not rooted in precedent or safety or, you know, any of these concerns that affect our interpretation, then all of a sudden it's a free for all type of thing.
And I agree. I think that inconsistency then creates avenues for other folks to modify their applications, right? You know, and then to say, well, this is, you know, listen, you can try and, you know, you know, kind of bind these things and say, oh, there's all these different, you know, the uniqueness of this application that yours doesn't have. The reality of it is, is there's, they're still going to come to the boards for that, right? We have a lot of people that, especially the architects in, in there that, you know, that put, that present the projects to us that do their research. Karen Parks was very clear on every single parking waiver that had been, had ever been issued. And luckily there was never one for the expansion of residential, right? So we, you know, we're able to kind of do our jobs, but she's doing her job as well and she's very good at it. So I think that, you know, we have to be aware that, you know, these things are meaningful, right? And inconsistent, whether it's an inconsistent application in some, you know, of the code and somebody calls you out and says, hey, I should have, I should get nine for free. We explain why that's not the case. The other way of getting the next person nine for free is a problem, right? You know, and it isn't just a problem with that person because it's a problem with, with all your prior application of the code, right?
I think that's, I think that's a, the prior applications and the inconsistent application at this point does create a problem for everyone. It's not necess, it's, I mean, I appreciate the precedent, you know, the precedent and stuff for the future, but also retrospectively, yeah. It create, it immediately creates the liability that exists.
It's the other side of the same coin, you know?
Yeah.
They're twin peaks.
Go back. I think that, I think we're, I think we're a strong.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll all write the applicant tomorrow and say that we missed them tonight. There may have been some conflict, that may be why the ZBA was, because we had, although it has been now two, three weeks, no, four weeks, because he was ready to come in afterwards, but that was, that was Christmas. So obviously we didn't meet, so, all right. Let's see, public comment, we have no public. Board business, we've completed, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All of you agree? Let's go.
For 114, I'll draft a resolution of approval.
Yeah, great.
I already did it, actually.
Very good.